I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, call this Miller, Frank Barrier, Steve Campbell, Jim Dunley, Larry Seer, Mark Hevers, Bill Wilson, Eda Shade.
Here. Okay, this time we'll hear persons present and we're going to start with Emily Swineford from Nittany Paper Company.
Hi, I'm Ann Lusk, Emily's running lead.
Oh, okay, sorry.
From Nittany Paper, I'm Ann Lusk and I'm here with Catholic Charities. And we're working in conjunction with Nittany Paper in order to have refugee resettlement through Catholic Charities in the area. With Nittany Paper having an expanded company and business, they've been very successful and they love Louis Towne. So, we would like to work with Catholic Charities, this is Pete. There is a government order that, signed by President Trump, that you cannot resettle any refugees without the local municipalities' approval. And we understand there might be a lot of questions and concerns, but the nice thing about refugees is they actually have multiple screenings and are here legally and are able to work immediately. So I brought Pete "Fasazio."
Yesuch.
Yesuch, yeah, I knew I'd get that wrong, with me from Catholic Charities from Harrisburg. And he'd like to just discuss and answer any of your questions and concerns. This is Seeking a Workforce, Catholic Charities, this is their most successful program. This is out of the diocese of Harrisburg. And they deal with many companies, actually companies call them up and ask them when they're having other people come in because they provide an excellent workforce that shows up to work and works hard and does not have any kind of crime, how can I say this? They're here to work, they've lived in refugee camps, and many of them are highly educated. For instance, I worked with Catholic Charities years ago with people from Bosnia. The people I helped, he was a chemical engineer, she had been a doctor. And when you come to this country, all of your credentials are no longer good. So the level of people coming here, they're highly educated, they want to work. And Catholic Charities does an excellent job, they're just not dumped into your community. There's a five-year following to make sure it's a successful relationship and that they're doing well and that people are acclimated. You have a wonderful community, it's beautiful, it's a small town. And it's one of the attractions for bringing people here is these highly educated people that are coming here with basically nothing, one spouse could work at Nittany Paper and the other spouse could be getting their credentials back at Penn State University. So I wanted to bring Pete here to answer any of your questions or concerns. Again, there's a resolution that has to be signed in order for that to happen, and we would hope that you would consider doing so. So Pete?
Thank you. Thank you for the invitation to be here. I went to Juniata College and then worked for three and a half years here in Louis Towne at the big treatment center, it was across the street, and I'm glad to come back here. I haven't been back for a while, but I know Louis Towne well. So I work for Catholic Charities in Harrisburg, and we cover the diocese of Harrisburg, which is a 15-county area that includes this county. I brought not enough papers, but some that obviously with you. This is our annual report, 80 years of service in our agency, we've been around a while. And hopefully we'll continue to be around with the social service arm of the church so that there's a Department of Schools, there's a social service department as well, and that's what we do. So, as Ann was saying, we do different things, we have adoption, foster care, residential programs, a program for pregnant women who are homeless, a homeless shelter in Harrisburg, a program for women who are addicted, residential programs, counseling. And so immigration and refugee services is one of those programs that we do, have been doing for some time, beginning with the fall of Saigon in 1975. We resettled many of the Vietnamese, the 40 Indian towns back then, and have continued to do so through the years. I brought some handouts and some are, they're not all colored, we're on a tight budget, but let me pass a couple down this way and a couple down here for people who may care to look at it. It's refugees, it's in fact, it's a complicated area, it's a political area, but just some basic definitions of immigrant. My ancestors were immigrants probably, unless you're Native American, Indians born here, you have immigration back in your language. A person who comes to this country but not born here. A refugee, and that's the category of people we're talking about tonight, is a person forced to flee their country because of persecution war violence. Designated refugee receives that legal designation in the country before they come here. And basically what happens is people are bombed, there's war, there's violence, they leave, they cross a border and they have nothing except what they have on their backs, and they're in these encamps, sometimes for decades. I know one fellow who works for us, he was in a camp for 20 years. The largest refugee camp in the world is in Dadao, Kenya, it's larger than the city of Atlanta, Georgia. More people are coming in than going out, there are more people displaced right now than since the end of World War II. Those numbers are in there, there's 21.3 million refugees currently. One of the things that people worry about is the fact that it's not a secure process. What happens is people are given that designation of a refugee through international effort, through the United Nations, and then they sit for months and sometimes years, mostly years, sometimes decades. And there are eight government agencies, six security databases, five background checks, four biometric security checks, three in-person interviews. And so this takes a long time, and you can look on the Department of Homeland Security and see the same information if you're interested in doing so. The, just to walk you through quickly the process, so there's refugees in these camps around the world, and the United Nations designates these people as refugees. And then various countries agree to take them or not take them, and the United States has done so, as well as many other countries. So, once people go through this process and they trickle out with all the screenings in place, in the United States, at the State Department, Catholic Charities, Lutheran Social Services, Jewish Family Services, Central Mennonite Committee will sit around a table with the United Nations and divvy up the refugees. So we'll get a share, everybody else gets a share, and the process is done that way. So we charities has our own network here in Harrisburg, we have our resettlement agency which consists of three parts, the refugee resettlement, we meet them at the airport, we bring them in, give them a meal, and we push them along for three months, during which time we teach them the language and get them jobs and get them working, which is the reason for being here. So, as Ann mentioned, it's the most successful thing we do. As I mentioned the other programs, we have people who've been in a long time, some return, these folks move through. Because if you're sitting in a camp for 20 years, you probably want to do something like work. So, I think from a real estate point of view, you'll know that they often buy houses, they're enterprising and work hard. They're brought here sometimes not having, knowing anything about money, you never had a medium of exchange, it was like, I'll give you my hat for your shoes, there's bartering, so they never saw cash to get them to understanding what a debit card is, or an escalator, they've never seen an escalator, we'll take them to Strawberry Square and they'll, it's an interesting process, many stories, many successful stories. That aside, every year the President of the United States does what is called the Presidential Determination, which is a, basically, it's a number that, he fills in this blank, it says, okay, the United States is going to take X amount of refugees this year. So as you can see, the history of the Presidential Determination is probably averaging, since 1981, around, let's say 60,000 to 70,000. This year, coming up, the fiscal year just started, the number's 18,000 for our country. It's not a lot of people. So, given that, we're not expecting to resettle a whole number, a lot of refugees. However, in addition to that, there is an executive order that followed it, and here's a copy of it. So it's signed by the President, and it says, okay, we're going to take refugees, if you take them, we want to know that your community is one that really wants them, and that's why we're here, to ask that Louis Towne be a welcoming community. And in order to establish Louis Towne as that, I have a resolution to present to you for consideration.
And we're looking at maybe 10 to 20 families, we're not looking to resettle hundreds or thousands, so I think it sounds scary when we talk about 18,000, but we're looking for, you know, really a small group to resettle here, and we would hope that your community would be open to welcoming people. I live in Lancaster County, we're the largest group of refugee resettlement in the United States, and it's worked extremely well, we have a thriving community there. What I find is people come here and be very, very successful, work hard, giving back, helped other members of the community, and open businesses, invested in real estate, and really add to the growth of your community. Lancaster has really grown because of the people coming in from other places, so it's been a positive experience, and I think you can say the same for Harrisburg.
In terms of numbers, at an end point, last year we brought in totally 59 refugees. So, this year, based upon 18,000, and during that time, I guess, there were 40,000 brought in nationally, this year 18,000, so our numbers are pretty close to that.
We're not looking to take over your town or anything like that, it's just small addition, and hopefully will be well.
We do, we do get requests from, as Ann said, other employers in Carlisle, the warehouses, Ross Companies, plenty companies, manufacturing, packaging, warehouse work, forklifts, that sort of stuff, calls every day because of the labor market's tight.
Because the people, labor market's tight and that people have produced and have been great additions to their company. So, Nittany Paper would love the opportunity to help grow the community as their business grows, and we would love if you'd be kind enough to sign the resolution to allow that. Do you have any questions at all?
Ask me anything.
I think you can ask us anything else.
I see people come into this community and with government help and programs, well, it's, they're set up to fail. So what makes your program healthy?
I'll tell you what's.
You said they don't know how to manage money, they don't know how to take care of a house, they don't know how to do a lot of these things, so what is your?
I'll tell you what's different, when the refugees come in, they receive under $1,000, but the difference is, on the program, there's a monitoring process from Catholic Charities. They have people help them for five years to make sure they succeed and don't fail. They don't want them to become another person looking for a handout, that's why.
One of the things that I think sometimes gets mixed up is the population you're talking about, there are a lot of people here who are undocumented, who are illegal.
Yeah, I'm talking about Americans, right along with undocumented, but I'm talking about Americans too.
We're talking about refugees.
They're set up to fail.
Yeah.
I'm asking you, what do you do in your programs that help these people manage money, know how to buy groceries, know how to clean house?
It's hands-on.
Those are the kind of things.
This is a federal program that.
Okay, if I could just interrupt in the matter of business, you know, if you guys could get together later and talk about that.
Happy to.
Thank you so much.
I do have a couple of questions.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Wait, what's your name, sir?
You're looking at maybe 10 to 20 families, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, now how do you fund them once they get here?
Well, they're going to have jobs at Nittany Paper.
So in other words, there's no funding behind this from Catholic Charities? They get a stipend. A stipend for three months. For three months.
But they're going to be in.
And how much is a stipend? Depends on the family size.
Number of people.
It's minimal, equivalent to what public welfare would be. But then they come here and they're immediately relying or dependent on our public welfare system, if it's such.
Well, these would be coming in as employees, not welfare recipients.
But if you move a family here, you're going to, I presume, employ maybe one person of that family.
Well, there's three shifts at Nittany Paper, so some, the husband and wife both might work there at different times, different shifts, then some of their other family members will take care of the children. Again, the reason that we went to Catholic Charities is we don't want to create any kind of welfare situation, we don't want to create any more burden on the taxpayer dollars. That's not what's looking here, they're coming in to be employed for specific positions.
We've got three components, we have resettlement, and that's the practice, we get them at the airport, get them a place, get them oriented, where's the grocery store, where's this, where's that. There's ESL, they learn the language, and there's employment services. Employment services is reviewed, how many, you have an 85% placement goal with benefits, that's the goal.
So they'd be coming in with health insurance.
If we don't do that, we lose our, we're not in business, that's all.
So they would be coming in, these people, and they would have health insurance and a job, so they wouldn't be looking for any kind of public assistance.
Where's the health insurance home program?
The employer.
The employer, okay. Let's say somebody goes to work for the employer and washes out, can't do the job.
Then we'd call Catholic Charities and replace them, find them another job.
In the same community?
Probably in the same community.
The other question I had was, are you approaching other municipalities other than the borough of Louis Towne?
Absolutely.
Here locally?
We will be going next to some of the other outside burrows and things like that, but our goal was to move people into town because you have a beautiful town, they could walk to work, and I feel it would add to the economy here to, there's a lot of vacant houses here that I've seen on the MLS. With earning a good wage to be able to purchase a home would be a real benefit to have homes not sitting vacant.
Give me, what does Nittany Paper start wage, do you know?
I believe that they're looking to start at between $1,250 and $17 an hour, depending on the person's skill level. Plus benefits, plus a membership to the YMCA. So again, looking to bring people in that can survive on their own, not look for any tax.
The people who tend to be refugees, the ones who may get out, are typically more skilled, more educated, have the means to be able to get out and backgrounds to support themselves. And somewhere or another, many times professionals who come here without a credential that doesn't transfer.
Like the people I dealt with from Bosnia, you know, chemical engineer, chemists, doctors, how horrible to work that hard to get that piece of paper in another country only for it to be taken away.
Any other questions, any council? Okay, thank you for your time.
What would our next step be as far as the resolution?
We'll, we'll talk about it.
Excellent, thank you so much for your consideration.
You're welcome.
We appreciate it.
Tim, you're up.
I saw the floating around the table up there, festival ice, December 5th and 6th, an ice sculpture, you guys sponsored one last year, and we did get positive feedback from that, so we're looking for you to do it again this year. As I said, a lot of the other communities that do this type thing on the holidays, the municipality or the county that is held in, that municipality generally does do the ice sculpture, they sponsor one, or whatever's going on within that group. And I did not hear any negativity, which is a good thing, but I did hear some positive comments about when people saw the ice sculpture sponsored by the borough themselves last year. I don't know what all papers you guys have there. I'm making this short and sweet, but I'm just handing this to the mayor, and if you are missing something, it may be in there. Thank you.
Thanks, Tim.
There is a $3.50 sculpture and a $6.50, I do know that, okay.
Thank you. Lucas, are you here?
Good evening.
Hi.
How are you doing?
Okay, how about you?
We're doing well, thank you. There we go. All right. Good evening, as everybody hopefully has noticed or took a ride on Kish Street, you can see that the project is pretty much complete, I think the project turned out very well. I think Green Avenue turned out very well with the new pavement, and the decision to add that into the project was very beneficial. With that, we've received pay application number two from Glennon Hall Baker, and based upon the work completed to date, which is pretty much everything, Diana and I and Tim did a final walkthrough last week, and they are going to come back and finish the line painting. So we are going to get double yellow lines on Dorcas Street, double yellow lines on Kish Street in front of the school, as well as probably a solid yellow line for the bus pull off. So we are going to add that into our quantities, so we will be getting a final payout. Those quantities are going to be about $2,000 for that final line painting as a quantity change order. I know last month we reviewed a couple change orders, and since they've been able to finish all the work at Green Avenue intersection, get all the paving completed, we do have a few more change orders that are going to need to be approved by the board for final payment. The base payment for pay application number two, we are still retaining 10%, but with that, the pay application number two, number is $255,579.82. That's for all the bid items, complete and in place, with some of the changes in the project that we had talked about before with not milling as much, adding the additional pavement at Kish Street. There are some savings in here, to the same token with the line painting and some of the extra pavement that we did at Green Avenue, there's some change orders to the plus side for the additional materials. We've already approved change order for the gravel on Green Avenue, we already approved a change order for the extra time in working around the gas line on Kish Street. Since then, they placed the 19-millimeter base on Kish Street, so change order number three, and Diana, I will get you all the change orders for final signatures, we have everything here from the contractor. But the 19-millimeter on Kish Street ended up at $47,129.55. I think last night, for last month, we discussed that was sort of a wash, since we didn't have to completely rebuild Kish Street, we were able to pour that money back into the 19-millimeter. Additional concrete, we had $750 for change order number five. Change order number six, now this was at Green Avenue, our original project stopped at the battery lines of Green Avenue, but due to the poor condition of that, we decided to add that into the project since we were still within our budget. With milling that off and building that back up, we had $9,987.50 worth of 12.5-millimeter pavement on Green Avenue, that was to build that back up and take out the poor roadway profile, it helped level everything up. And then the leveling course, we topped Kish Street pretty much the whole way down through, we sort of scratched the crown back on to get the water to flow to the curb, and then the final leveling course through the Green Avenue intersection, we ended up with That takes care of the extra materials. They had one more change order there at the Green Avenue intersection, water always laid on the inside turn, and it was really starting to beat the road up. So we worked with them and we set an inlet right there in the middle of the turn where the cars come from out Green Avenue and O'Hess and Manor. On the inside of that turn, we added an inlet, we encountered a water service line, a water main that was running directly beside the storm pipe. We encountered a sewer line that was actually running through the bottom of the corrugated metal pipe, and it was actually concreted over to make the bottom of the pipe smooth. So when we got into that, the guys actually worked a couple evenings, brought in light towers. We ended up and replaced about a 10-foot piece of 8-inch sewer main from the manhole in the street to the yard area, and we also ended up and replaced an additional 36-inch storm pipe, we did 20 feet, it was all rusted out, and that's the part that when we started to cut in for our inlet, the sewer pipe just already came up with the storm pipe because it was all concreted together. So at the end of the day, we have new storm pipe, we have new sewer main, we have an inlet that takes the water off of the roadway, and their extra time and materials for that is $10,483. So we had about three days, they had a couple of different crews in there working into the evening, so that was $10,483.
We recently shared a picture with you of the water pooling over there, was that taken care of?
It was, and what that was a result of is when they started the project, all the existing storm inlets, they put what they call a filter bag, and it's a black filter fabric that they set down into the inlet so the water can flow through them, but it captures all the runoff. So it was full of leaves. So for that first storm event, right after they paved, the inlet filter bags were still in there, and I think it was last Tuesday they pulled all those out, and I think the rain event last week disappeared. So yeah, no, that was definitely an issue, I heard about that as well. So with all that being said, we would look for approval of pay application number two, Change orders two through seven, well, two through six is $105,688, that's for all the paid, the extra pavement and materials, and then the final change order for their time of materials is $10,483. It does bring our total project right at about $550,000. When we get these final numbers for the paint, for the line painting, and then we'll reimburse them for the retainage, we are going to come in at roughly $550,000. The original project was $447,000, so we're going to come in at $550,000, so-and-so thousand, which still is within our budget there. And I know Diana and I had worked there a couple weeks ago, I think there's actually still going to be some money left over in allocation that you guys were earmarking for some other paving projects.
Did we get our money from that?
And they, they had reached out to us actually a couple of months ago and said, "Hey, when are you guys ready for that money?" So I anticipate it's just going through the changle there.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Yeah, no, that's, it, it helped make this project happen, 150,000.
Absolutely.
Yeah, it went a long way.
Do we need those approvals now, Lucas?
If, if, yes, if, if we could. I mean, um, yeah, everything's been budgeted and, and the project goes. So we can coordinate the final signature from the, uh...
I'll make the question. No, second.
Thanks, all guys.
Everyone in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. That's all we have on our list. Move into the consent agenda. Any questions or anything?
I have a quick question about S. Diana, maybe you can answer. It's the PLCB letter from the trolley car.
Yes.
So is that license being transferred to the new place on Main Street? Or is...
I think it's the new owner.
It has his name, but it doesn't have an address of transfer though?
No, it's the new owner, I believe it's a trolley car, yes.
So, this is the same gentleman that owns what used to be the, what was that?
Like the downright thing.
Yes, currently is the downright. So he owns the trolley car as well?
I don't know.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah, that's what it looks like to me.
Did you see that work?
I did, yeah. I saw it was all...
It was all a consent agenda.
It did not make any difference to me. It was just purely clarification.
I did have the, the really, letter from Comcast on the Internet Essentials program. When reading that, Diana, did you see that it looked like it was just informational for us in a way that we could have information here available for the public?
Yes, I was thinking about putting it on the website too.
Okay, did everybody read that?
Yes.
Yeah, I've asked about that before, actually. Same with when we get no...
So I think it'd be great to have some stuff down here for people to be able to access this Internet Essentials.
Yeah, but I think you can coordinate some kind of materials.
Yeah. And a free charge. I like free. Any questions? We have motion to approve. All those, you have discussion, right? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, let's move on to our regular scheduled reports. I guess your first, Diana.
So we received a letter, um, in regards to 117 North Brown Street. There was a water leak, Rex went out and hadn't verified that it did not go down into the sewer for enormous sheets. Uh, the average consumption there was 3,000 gallons at a rate of 71.97. It was billed them for $143.88. They're requesting an honoration of $71.91. With counsel's approval, that is.
You say it was...
Yes.
Discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
There was a PDOT had contacted us in regards to the project. They're going to be milling and paving, um, doing 88 curb ramp improvements and traffic signal upgrades at South Route 3002 West Fourth Street and South Route 3006 North Junianna Street. Um, they're anticipating, uh, bidding the project out of, in July of 2020. Construction is anticipated to start in September of 2020. And they're anticipating it to be completed in the summer of 2021. So that's a big project up and coming. Um, and then the last thing I have is that, um, based upon our records retention manual, we can dispose of certain items within certain timeframes. Um, the resolution that was on the protective meeting documents, um, we would like to dispose of with counsel's approval. So I would need counsel's approval to do that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Bob, for left.
Okay. Last month, fire department responded to 25 alarms, four building fires with minor damage. We had a cooking fire contained a container, passenger vehicle fire, four medical assists with the same EMTs, five motor vehicle accidents with injuries, one with entrapment, expectation of victims from building structures, one. Natural gas leak, one. Power lines down, one. Two lockouts with children locked vehicles. Uh, standby assignment dairy township, one. Odor of smoke, one. And heat detector activation due to malfunction, one. Uh, during the month, fire department participated in several community events opposed of the trades. Uh, between the three stations, we done 11 fire prevention programs, which October is fire prevention.
It's all enjoyed from what I heard, too.
Thank you. We enjoy it too.
Thank you.
If I could, let me get something here.
Sure.
So, a friend of mine that, well, the business center next to my property, several years back, there was, actually it was an Eagle Scout project. There's a piece of property behind what used to be the managed tool company. Okay? And, several years back, it became an Eagle Scout project to kind of put some dirt in there, level the property out. And then it was going to be used as a firefighter's memorial. The fire company was going to, you know, then get involved in fire departments, rather. Went through council, everything was fine. The project kind of fell by the wayside over the years. Well, the individual's father approached me about it. And I then called the chief to see what we could do to kind of get that kind of back on track or breathe new life in it. And I guess I just wanted to mention it. This is a piece of property that is kind of restored to the family. It's, well, it's barriers, fuel, um, we are, you know, oil pellets. Jim's father, actually, their business was on that property for several years till the flood came through. And then the business moved to its current location or shortly thereafter. Frank, you could probably fill in the details better than I can here. But it kind, it's a property that's kind of important to three generations of the family. And they wanted to leave it off, you know, in the end as this kind of dedication to the community. It then became an Eagle Scout project and it just kind of was never finished. So it'd be great if we can, I guess, bring that together and see it come to life. Just kind of letting council know so that everybody knows and is aware of it.
Well, it's a great project.
My understanding was the fire company is going to follow up. That was my understanding of what it was done. There's not a lot, not a lot there to build on. It's leveled at the curb. And then you go back so many feet, then it drops down. It's not as wide as we would have liked it to be. And there's a question as to how much fill you could put in there, being that close to the creek. And that's where we left it. In other words, if you look at it, it, it's all grass, but then it drops down. And the question was, can that be built up and leveled because it's in the flood zone, maybe? And, uh, that's where we left it. Again, there's enough room there to put something, certainly. But there's more room could be utilized if you could level it out.
Well, Frank, if I remember correctly, and I use the ball in this.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, Bob Kibler was here. Started Los Fire Department. Bob Kibler went down, we met down there. And he was looking a way to do some landscaping, filling that in and whatever. Then Bob retired and things kind of got slowed down. Maybe that's a good idea. I thought he'd been kind of a... That's for me too. If we get somebody to spearhead it.
That was John O's?
Yeah, yeah.
We own it, the borough owns it.
No, I don't know, so...
Is there any chance it could come closer to the road? I mean, pull it away from the bank?
Well, I don't, well, I don't know. It's leveled around.
Yeah, that's what I mean. Could we bring like any kind of memorial closer to, away from the, the problem there at the bank? With, with the creek?
Well, you almost have to look at it and, you know. Yeah, if we want to direct staff to have public works, get down there and follow up on it, that's up to us.
I know if it's just a matter of a triaxal road or two of dirt. I think it's more than that, I'm afraid.
They put a lot of fill in there.
Yeah, that was...
Whenever they did that, they, they put a lot of fill in.
Yeah, it was, uh, Tom Barrier was who did the Eagle Scout project. His dad and uncle, Jim and Dave, they hauled all the fill in there to level out.
Yes, I, I helped to write it up. Yeah.
Okay, so I mean, we could have public works go down and look at it, but who would get, then go forth and do this more?
I think probably public works or somebody from the borough should find out if you can level off more of that site. You know, without getting into a problem with, uh, DEP or whatever. And then go from there. I mean, the logical thing would be to make that as level and utilize as much of it as you could. And, uh, I don't, I don't think that's ever been formally done.
We'll get it done. Mayor?
Yeah, I think I, I wanted to mention is to thank publicly everyone that was involved in the veterans' day parade. Uh, the weather was a little shaky, but the rain held off. And, uh, I thought we had a, a better attendance, even though the, the weather wasn't the greatest in the past, uh, two years than, than we had back then. So, uh, I was pleased with the participation. I know, um, Tim and his group was there and, uh, a lot of people, I think it was only maybe two cancellations with the, to the, uh, weather disstorm. And, uh, I thought it went very well.
Do you think so, Tim?
There was a lot more registration.
Yes.
The spectators was down some.
We got in the, uh, the armory. They, they participated this year, so I thought that meant a lot to the veterans also, so...
Tim, I would have been in that one with you too, that I was right here in this one. While it was going on.
When we came by, I saw all the lights on. And I thought something about the portal.
Where we were. Okay. Anything else, Mayor?
No, I think that's it.
Okay. Steve?
Okay, statistics for October, uh, 489 calls for service, 35 traffic citations, 15 non-traffic, 53 written warnings and 92 parking tickets were given out. That's for October. Um, just an update on our, the new vehicle that we ordered months ago. Still no news on what the issue is. We talked about it last week at finance committee meeting. It was suggested by, by some there that we look into the possibility of maybe getting a regular gas engine vehicle, which they are available and in stock in some dealerships. And then pushing the hybrid till next year. So, you know, we're bringing it up here tonight to see what, you know, the consensus of council is. If we need to look into that further or if we're just going to wait to receive the, the order.
What was the price of the gas engine worth, Steve?
Um, the sticker price on it, I don't have an exact quote. Um, we would actually have to, to give them all the specs. I mean, if we're similarly equipped. But sticker price wise, it was about $4,000 less than the hybrid. So I would imagine it's going to be around that.
The thought was if we get the, we want to get into the hybrid, you know, situation, obviously to save fuel. You know, for our vehicles that are out there 24/7 essentially. But it's just been held up and held up and held up and held up. And we're trying to start a rotation of vehicles. And, you know, our thought was, listen, let's just, if the gas ones are available, maybe we just move forward with it. Maybe they'll have the hybrid issues worked out by next year. We can shoot for the hybrids, the next vehicle. That at least gets a new vehicle in the mix. And up and moving. That we were...
We can't get any answers on the hybrid, uh, what the issue is. For motor company, um, you know, the local dealership, we're dealing with lakes. We've been trying to get answers from them, they're just not giving us anything. It's not their problem, uh, it's for motor company. But nobody seems to have an answer as to when it's going to be here, what the issue is. So that's where we're at with it.
Right. Do Chairman Finance like that? I, I think he'd rather see the numbers first before he give the approval.
Well, what I said in the finance committee meeting was that for the chief to contact Lake and find out what the price is of the gas. So we get it in for 2019, we bypass next year, buy the vehicle. Since you're keeping, since you got past your council, keep your 85 or whatever it is at 80,000 miles on it. That would be, that's what I said in the finance committee meeting.
But you, we don't have a price yet.
No. I asked him to do that, find out.
How much economy do you get if you do the hybrid vehicle?
The estimates we looked at last year, according to what Ford's projections are the, based on the mileage and the, you know, we use it per year. We're looking to save around $3,500 per year. That's our projection there.
How many miles were you looking at per year on that vehicle?
Uh, I think we were looking at 12, anywhere between 12 and 15.
Actually, warranty coverage of the board is...
Well, you're still a real party dude for three years.
I did a quick calculation here. $4,000 less money for the vehicle for gasoline engine. You're paying about two bucks a gallon for gas, because you don't pay tax. So that would buy you 2,000 gallon gasoline, and 15 mil a gallon. You are a break even at 30,000 dollars. That's where it puts you. So, you know, you're, you know, somebody you want to do. I mean, it takes you to be a break even in the last two years.
Well, we, we had the price in the initial conversation. And we're at current prices.
Oh, you're at the point now, if you're a hybrid, hybrid vehicle, you're almost at the point now where you would carry it over to next budget year. You know, you're, you're, it's not looks like you're going to get delivery this year on that vehicle.
That's why the thought was to go ahead with the, a gas vehicle.
Well, it's either that or you're rolling over in the next year budget.
No, that's why I made the point is to get the gas vehicle in here and forget about the hybrid. Get it in for 19, we're done with it.
So we can have a motion to do that?
Well, I mean, again, I asked them to get the price on the vehicle on the gas. And we don't have that today, so don't need to bring it in, have a spot.
Well, you may roll your gas, maybe over the next year too, might look like it. If you wait another month.
Right.
Yeah. But that's what you want to do, that's what you want to do. What do you, well, Mark, what are you advocating? And he get a third bug on the gasoline engine. There you go.
That's what I asked.
There you go, chief.
That was an estimate, 3271, that was pretty close.
Yeah, I mean, that was last Thursday. I was actually off Friday and yesterday. So today I talked to Chuck just to get an idea of what the gas was.
But you didn't have all the specs? He isn't have all the specs?
And he said assembly equipped. The sticker price for assembly equipped vehicle is 4,000 less for the gas. And we're talking the same equipment, not talking totally different vehicles.
Okay, so then we... Okay, so then what was the sticker on the hybrid?
Forty-two, seven, nine.
So, that's like thirty-eight?
Thirty-eight, seven, eighty-five.
That's where about the dollars, right, when you buy it?
Yeah. So, I mean, we can make a motion not to exceed thirty-nine thousand dollars, but it's just gotta, get it to end right true?
Yeah, that's, that's before the discounts and stuff. That's not what we would pay anyway. That's sticker, sticker price comparing to the vehicles.
Right.
Yeah, here's around thirty-one or thirty-ten.
Yeah.
It's like real cheap. But like you said, that's not what we got with this. I don't want you to do that.
Well, so we're gonna get lower, so we can just get down to, down to thirty-three, five. I mean, that's how I'm saying.
Well, it's thirty-three, six. We'll be back here next month.
Don't get it.
Give me a little bit of leeway.
Thirty-five.
I'm not even gonna exceed.
I made a motion to urge the gas vehicle not to exceed thirty-five thousand dollars.
Captain thirty-five?
Yeah.
I'll check that.
Any further discussion? All there is in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Anything else, Chief?
Just an update on our radio equipment. The actual hardware, the radios and so forth are in. I guess there's a programming issue with Motorola. They're trying to work out. County is going all this with them. So, they're expecting us to have the new radios in our hands in a few weeks. And transitioning to the encrypted system sometime January. Originally, they said the end of October, but it's all those things, you know.
Chief, don't act like I hear while Mac, you mentioned that the, the new radios, whatever, gonna have GPS stuff in it?
No, I checked on that.
Yeah, we asked.
Yeah, we actually have our GPS on them.
They have that capability, but I checked with Phil with this county, and he said they're not. I guess you have to purchase different software.
Okay.
And they're not doing that. So, we don't have this. The only thing I also wanted to mention, we're doing our Phila Cruiser event on December thirteenth. It's on Friday from nine to four P.M. at the John Store down Dorothy Street. And that's an event we do every year to collect non-perishable food and money donations that go to Mother Hubbard's Cover and Loomin Center. So, I hope that we should participate in that. We'll be advertising that, getting that on social media and so forth. On Friday the thirteenth. Friday the thirteenth. So, we'll be good luck. Usually pretty good in that. We did a pretty good turnout, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Mr. Remy?
Thank you. The first thing I wanted to discuss is I had sent around an ordinance that came out of Law and Ordinance Committee dealing with blight and revitalization. It's, it tries to do three things, basically. Give the ability to have a cause of action against the actual person, the owner of property with a serious code violation. An illegal act, either an action of law or an action of equity. It allows for asset attachment of the owner of real property. If there is like a judgment against the person as a result of one of these actions. And it allows for the denial of municipal permits for people with existing code violations. These, this is just kind of another step towards getting more tools at the borough's disposal to deal with blight. Mr. Seavers had sent around some suggested additions, both of which I'd actually had in here originally and taken out. But I, I don't have any problem with including. One involves allowing for the extradition of out-of-state property owners with criminal cases essentially for code, serious code violations. The only reason I took it out, because I just didn't know practically that it would ever be used. It doesn't really hurt to have it in there. And the other thing had to do with, oh, suing, suing associations and how you, how you would do that. I would, I would support adding both of those in. There's, there's no reason not to have those added back in. So, we're just kind of here to talk about whether or not council wants to go ahead with advertising and ordinance for consideration in December regarding these.
I wonder how many, how many people from out of town own property within the borough? A lot, a lot.
Yeah.
I don't think we can make a decision to advertise it today, Mark. I think we should make changes that we, you had just mentioned. Maybe bring it back to Law and Ordinance again.
Okay, we'll, we'll talk about it then.
Yeah, and if you could, I had asked you some questions about where you found that information. And I'd like to see their outcomes, how successful it is. It is gonna require some inner working, and I just don't see that occurring.
Yeah, that was kind of hard.
To be honest.
I think Scott made a...
I think it's gonna happen.
Absolutely it is.
The DA about this.
I should have put it in. We should have it.
Yep.
And it only applies to people who are from out of state who own property?
What's that?
I said that only applies to people who are out of state.
Out of state owners, yeah.
Well, the extradition.
Right.
I mean, extradition as a practical matter is a pretty big deal. It's pretty expensive.
Correct.
I just, yeah.
But like Jim said, it doesn't cost us anything extra.
No, it really doesn't. I think it makes sense to put it back in there. I don't, I don't have...
But it's in there, so.
But the way this ordinance is proposed, if someone has a property that's in violation and the borough has to step in and correct, we can enter a judgment against that individual, which covers all his property?
Right, correct. Yes, that's the whole, that's the main, who we...
All right, the other question is, what's the story on criminal charges here? What's that all about?
Criminal charges, there's a state law that says that if you have, there are certain instances. I printed it out here. I think I might have said, you might have just said it.
Yeah, fifty or five hundred.
Yeah, okay, so what it says is there can be criminal charges for failure to comply with property codes. It requires, you know, kind of like repeated convictions for serious code violations. I'm not familiar with that ever taking place. I mean, it's...
Is that conviction at the district magistrate level or court of police?
These would actually be like criminal cases filed by the police and prosecuted by the county district attorney, in criminal.
Well, just an observation, a lot of these situations where we have serious code violations, the violators have no money.
Correct.
They don't have the means to correct the violations. And you have a situation here where you're going to charge them criminally when they're, when they don't have the means. It seems rather heavy-handed to me, but if it's something that we feel we need to do, that's, that's up to the board. But it just seems very heavy-handed.
And really, it's not any decision that the board has to make. The law's in place, I mean, now, so...
So, it doesn't have to be part of our ordinance?
No, it wouldn't have, you wouldn't have to take any action, so it's out there.
Okay.
But it's in the ordinance.
I don't think it should be.
Okay, it matter, it doesn't matter if it's in the ordinance or not, is that correct?
Right, right, it's, it's there.
Okay.
The thing is, we have cases where people are, I mean, flaunting their arrogance towards the borough.
We have two or three.
Moving on with substantial purchases while we have a health and safety hazard they have created and left in this community for us to deal with. I'm sorry, they should be criminalized.
Amen.
Thank you, Dave.
But I think you also have to afford some discretion in there for the other people that Frank is talking about. Because I believe we have more of those citizens in this community than we do the citizens that you're talking about, Dave. There are more people who can't afford to fix their properties up.
I...
And I don't think criminal charges are going to help that situation in any way, shape, or form.
And who makes that final decision whether to charge criminally or not?
That's it. It would all be the boroughs.
It would have to be a police, police officer who filed the charges. And, and the district attorney then would determine whether to prosecute.
But it would be the borough that got it to that point.
Right, essentially.
So, discretion would be the boroughs.
There's always discretion in any kind of criminal charges. So, you know, like she said, with some people that, you know, that shouldn't, shouldn't be charged in that way. You wouldn't have to. At least the tools in the toolbox.
That's, yeah, that's my...
I understand. I'm just trying to think long-term and for whenever we're not the people sitting around this table and the ones making that decision and utilizing that discretion. I don't like to have something there that could be utilized later as a technique for, you know... Issues, I guess.
Mark, this being within state law, does it make the process easier to get to that point for those few occasions? If it's in our ordinance, or does that not make a difference at all?
It wouldn't, wouldn't make a difference.
So, we do not include this in our ordinance, we can pursue that.
Yeah.
Right, what Mark had requested adding was the ability to extradite people like from another state if one of these cases came about.
So, that's what we, that's all the borough would really be taking any action to approve. Like the law, the state law exists independent of what the borough does or doesn't do.
All right, I guess.
Take it back to law ordinance.
Take it back to law ordinance and then...
Hammer it out and bring it back next month.
Yeah.
Yep, we will.
We've advertised the repeal of the ticket ordinance. That's ready for consideration by Borough Council if Borough Council desires to take action. These are the, these are the tickets that were for use for code violators. We tried it out for, for a couple of years, and I think, you know, Rex and, and I both agree that it's probably better to go back to our previous way of doing things, which is proceeding by notice of order rather than the violation tickets. So, if anybody wants to make a motion, can do so.
I made a motion that we repeal the existing ticket ordinance. That's discussed.
Any further discussion? Can we get a roll call on that? Frank Barrier?
Yes.
Gabe Campbell?
Yes.
Jim Felling?
Yes.
Mark Seavers?
Yes.
Dana Shade?
I think three has to do with a public hearing that was held before the meeting tonight. Whereby Sheets is asking the borough to adopt the resolution approving the transfer of a liquor license from Bramville Township into the borough for the Sheetz store down on Junior Street. There's, Sheets prepared a resolution approving it. I prepared a resolution denying it if that should be the case. Just so whichever way Borough Council goes, we have resolutions ready for you.
Do we have a motion at least for the purpose of discussion?
I want to look at the review.
Hey, thanks, Frank.
Second discussion.
Okay.
In hesitation, it sounds like there's...
Right.
...any discussion.
Maybe I have any questions about the hearing?
No, well, all you need to do to see how these things operate, you know, the burden would be down in Midland Town. You know, they haven't set up to do this, and I haven't seen anybody on the premises here.
Yeah.
You know, it's basically a carryout six-pack situation and, well, it's illegal to do it.
The first was, you can't do it. You can't drink on the premises.
Yeah, they can.
Can they?
Yeah.
They can actually drink on the premises?
Other than for the council, but I think this license that they're applying for would allow.
Right. I mean, they have to offer seating for thirty people and give a certain fee to thirty people. And according to Liquor Board, they have to allow them to drink there if they want. But it doesn't seem to be a bar anymore. There's no T.V.'s or anything. You know, you go in the beer cave, you walk up the counter, you set it there, they ask you for your driver's license. You tell them you don't have it with you, you go home.
That's right.
I've been turned down there twice down, down Midland Town. They ask me for driver's license, I limp up to the counter, and then they don't want to give me a beer.
Tragedy, Frank.
But, yeah, they, they record everybody and they refuse you, so there you go.
But, Mark, it was kind of, well, I don't want to say like out of, I can't put words in, in turn of his mouth. But my impression was that, yes, you can have two beers there, but it's not something that they're really looking.
Yeah, I mean, I've just never walked in and she's and seen anybody sitting there with a beer. I just see a boy there and I'm like, I see the one going, I see a beer.
Now, you look at Johnny down at the O.I.P., he is a beer cooler. You ever seen him down there?
Yeah.
Hardly ever.
Well, they draft them too, they offer, so... Okay, so we have a motion on the table, seconded. Further discussion?
I did, I did second.
Okay. Do we, let's do a roll call. Frank Barrier?
Yes.
Gabe Campbell?
Yes.
Jim Felling?
Yes.
Mark Seavers?
Yes.
Dana Shade? Yep. Yes.
Diane, Chica? I can get you over there. Yeah, the fourth thing is just kind of informational. We got an email last week from Rhonda regarding the bus shelter they put down there. There had been discussions back when it was being developed regarding getting some type of agreement with the borough. That's ongoing. I have something from their attorney. Hopefully in December, I'll be able to present it to Borough Council, but no action tonight. I just wanted to kind of make, make sure that's on everybody's record.
While we're talking legal resolutions, do we want to discuss the immigrant Catholic Diocese refugee?
Yeah, I would call it here for the standpoint of action. I'd like to see what the other municipalities have to say about.
I have contacted, well, I left messages to two of the mayors in two of the areas that they, they do have this program, so I'm waiting to hear from them.
Yeah, outside of Midland Town.
Right.
Well, that, and I would like to see how Derry Township reacts, Bramville Township. I, I don't, I don't like the idea of citing everybody in the borough of Lewistown. I'm not against the program per se, but right now, we have the highest Midland County Housing Authority, which is, you know, it is what it is, okay? And I would just like to see this program spread out throughout the community rather than within our three square miles. I'd just like to see how, how these other townships are reacting to it. From, from my standpoint. You guys want to take a vote tonight?
That's a good point.
Have, have, I mean, that's just how I feel.
We've just started with the borough first, and then we're gonna set up appointments with Jake Foreman, Jake Senator. And then we're going to probably go to other townships.
Recreting cities and sanctuary cities in the new...
Because I preach that.
Crime rates and...
I don't, I don't think that's, I don't think that's the end. I don't have a problem with the... I was over at Nene Payton today, okay? Talked to them about the program. It, it's the type of people that they need to bring in are people that will work there, that are qualified people to work there. The other thing that was pointed out to me is right now, there's... The other thing that was pointed out to me is right now there's 500 job postings here in Mifflin County that are going unfilled. There is a shortage of labor here in the county. And this is a situation that is, you know, it's fairly sanctioned. You have a charity willing to work with this to get people here to hold down jobs. It's, but again, I just don't like the burrow of Lewis Town being it, so to speak, being the soul of this whole provider here or venue.
They said that there would be.
We thought there was. But we felt that we'd start with the burrow first and then we don't plan on putting everybody in the burrow. Probably within three to five square miles of Nitty Paper.
Send it to the committee?
Maybe they should give us an update next month, how they're making up with other municipalities here locally.
Absolutely. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'd feel better if you do that.
Okay. Are you on, you want to talk about this, Frank?
Yeah, I can talk about that. It doesn't, that picture there really doesn't do this thing justice. It's a four by eight mural that came out of the Green Gables. It was done in 1958. The artist's name is down in the corner. Ken Wilson. I couldn't track down anything about this guy. I don't know if he was on my kind or did these or even somebody local. It hung, according to the corner, it said it hung in the O'Hassan Room of the Green Gables Hotel. It's dated 1958. I have an opportunity to buy it. It's hanging on a wall at an antique dealer's home. It's not very well lighted. No, it is quite a dark brown. I don't know if it was made that way or if it's tobacco smoke or what, but if you look at it, it's very well done. It has all the little towns, when they were settled, who settled them. Somebody put a lot of research into that thing. I have an opportunity to buy it.
What area does it represent?
Early, early. It shows like it has all really dates on it, but it was done in 1958. I talked to Dave Wilson, I'm a four star. He tried to remember, said he couldn't tell me much about it. His father was a part owner of the Gables. I have an opportunity to buy it. I have people who are willing, within the community here, I solicited. I have folks that are willing to pay for it. I can bring it into burrow hall. And the only cost to Lewis Town burrow would be what the labor cost for public works to hang it. It's worthy. It's not a piece of junk and it would be a good addition to the building. It's four by eight. It's big. And I've looked at several places. There are not very many four by eight walls in this building.
That was my next question.
Well, probably the place where the most people would see it would be right there on the wall next to refuse office. There's two ways to hang it. I talked to Planky about it. We looked at it. We can hang it right there on the wall, but it'd be down low, so I'm going to have to put a piece of tempered glass over it. Some people wouldn't monkey with it. And like I said, the only cost to the burrow would be public works hanging the thing and I'll take care of the rest. There will be that and there will be a plaque with the donors' names on it. Simple as that.
I think it would be an amazing addition to the history, the building and the history of the community.
That's great.
Yeah, I just have this on the wind too, so I must lucked out on this one. And I've talked to half a dozen people. They're each going to pony up a hundred bucks. And I'm going to need probably better part of a thousand dollars to do it, but I'll take care of it. And hopefully we'll get it, if I get approval that we can hang it here, I'm going to take care of buying it tomorrow. It's going to line up in your office for a while, Mayor, till we get, till we get the thing hung and get some glass over it. So we're good. I just need the approval of council here that we can do this.
I'll make a motion that we approve the authorization of public works to.
And hang it up.
Hang it in the building.
All those, or any further discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you for a nice call.
Okay, Tim Yon mentioned this at the beginning. We have the opportunity again to sponsor an ice block at the Festival of Ice. I think each one of you has this hidden in front of you. The smallest block is $3.50. Great way to show our support for a community event. It's in its 23rd year, I believe.
Dana, can I add that also that you can pick the sculpture that you want? And there's a lot of new ones this year also.
Okay, I'll step down and make the motion.
And my, my own issue or my thing, you know, we did this last year, but my problem is, listen, you know me, I'm all about community events.
Right.
I organize and facilitate one. But how do we do a block of ice and then not donate something to every other event that happens? That's where I have the, that's my whole thing.
Well, do other events actually come and ask and purchase for something?
Oh, they will. I know what you're saying, but I think that we should be involved in the community and community events as much as possible. I do.
So how else do we get involved unless we?
Now. I don't know unless we can afford fiscal, we could be involved in every event. That's really.
Okay, well, we had a motion, we're talking about the ice sculpture, Frank. We had a motion and then a second to discuss.
Who made the motion?
I stepped down and made the motion.
And who was your second?
No, I didn't say.
Dana?
I thought you did for discussion purposes.
I don't know. I just kind of started talking.
I thought for sure you said, I'm seconded for discussion purposes. Sorry, Dave. I thought you said it before you started talking. Right. Do we have a second? Okay. Dana Shady? Next is a courtesy parking request.
Received a letter from Jim Ziegler in regards to implementing the courtesy parking beginning of Thanksgiving, Thursday, November 28th, and lasting through New Year's Day, Wednesday, January 1st, 2020. They've done it in the past and what they do is they give us things in regards to it for the courtesy parking. So they would like to do that again with council's approval.
I'll second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Sean, you want to talk about?
Okay. Each year they, with council's approval, they close burrow hall on Friday, the day after Thanksgiving. We need council's approval again to do that accordingly if they so desire.
Is that with people vacation versus?
They have to take, yes. They have to take time.
Vacation or no?
Yep, personal time or vacation time, supporting one.
So maybe. I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just want to make it clear that burrow hall is actually closed that day and you don't bring people in here to pay the extra to work.
Oh, no, we've never paid them to work.
All right, well, okay.
I think maybe I have my interest.
Well, I mean, in the past, we closed burrow hall that day and then we would have people come in to work special projects and then they would get paid. I mean, we're closing the burrow hall and nobody gets paid unless they want to take a vacation or a personal day or whatever.
I know I've come in when, but I'm a salary, so it doesn't matter what they want.
I understand that.
All right.
Next we have approval of the 2016 C D B funds. No? Oh, I just want to show. Did you hear that? She said, yeah, we do. Okay, I'm sorry. So we need a vote. All those in favor of closing burrow hall on November 29th, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Now we can talk about the approval of the 2016 C D B funds for Big Brothers, Big Sisters.
They're looking at the amount of $180.47. It's the fair share that for the funds to draw down for this 2016 C D B fund.
I'd like to make a. I'll second.
Discussion?
Yeah, before we paint this last name.
It's every so often.
Yeah, it's not been completed at all. There's going to be more coming in the future.
What, till their allocation is used up?
Yes.
But it is. Okay, all right.
Okay. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Next approval of 2017 C D B funds for administration and materials and supplies.
Yep, this is in the amount of $2,043.03. It's for the third quarter salary reimbursement.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Next we have the appointment of Brian Van Zijl to the planning commission.
She was sent an informational application from Mr. Van Zijl in regards to being appointed to the planning commission.
Was, in reading his application, obviously we're going to go beyond that. Was he okay with the consumers saying what the planning commission is about and what they do and.
I didn't know they knew the research outcome, move or.
Well.
I knew that we are in a shortage of.
Well, and he does say here for his closing paragraph that he realizes that he may need to understand the role better as it functions in Lewis Town. But he did, yeah. So I would think he has some knowledge of what he's getting into.
It just, well, from what he wrote out, it seemed like maybe he thought it was more than. Okay.
Okay. Do we need a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve Brian Van Zijl's application to the planning commission. Thank you.
Any discussion? Okay, let's do a roll call.
Yes.
Frank Marrier?
Yes.
Jim Fumling?
Yes.
Mark Seavers?
Yes.
Dana Shady? Yes. Okay, great. Someone call and congratulate Brian. Next, we have approval for handicap parking space at 206 Logan Street by resolution. I don't know. We didn't have a streets meeting, so.
But this was something, an application that was sent in.
Okay.
The streets committee chairman did check.
Huh? No, we didn't have a meeting.
The streets committee chairman did go out.
Oh, he did, okay.
He contacted me in regards to it and he didn't have a problem with it, but it simply wasn't counted. He's actually.
He's canceled.
He's actually going to cancel the next C D B, so it would defer again till December.
So you're saying the streets chairman looked at it.
He had no problem with it.
Yeah. So. Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Mr. Campbell, you are up.
Okay, so somewhere, somehow along the line, along came a street called Harding Avenue. It was never added to our street sweeper schedule ordinance, and we need to do that. I believe it is being swept.
Being swept.
It's just not.
Officially.
Officially added to the ordinance. So we need a motion to add Harding Avenue to the street sweep.
Second motion.
Second. Thank you, Mike.
Yes, sir.
So basically what you're saying is no parking on Harding Avenue Sunday night? Is that it?
Um.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think there's a sign already there.
But it's not in the ordinance.
Correct.
Is that right? Okay, okay.
We just need to add Harding to section 233-31.
Yeah.
So advertise.
Just in time for us to stop for you.
Yep.
Well, we'll get that advertised and bring it to council.
Did Tim verify the signage down there that it is indeed there?
I thought. From our discussions, yeah.
Okay, because if not, we need to make sure that it is.
We need to have a motion to advertise that. This is an ordinance.
Well, I hope our ordinance passed. And then you're going to, then the motion to advertise it. Okay.
Just a, while we're on the street sweeping, just to clarify, it's suspended as of the Friday before Thanksgiving.
Correct.
I know we made like a general thing last year.
Twenty second? Yes. I think that's what it is.
Thank you, G. I know a lot of people were.
It's been on Facebook already, so I answered someone's question, so.
So it's the 22nd, that's the.
Yep.
We also have a good announcement from our followers. And it's on the website too.
Can we put it on E G channel? Okay, you're up next with fire committee, Dave.
Fire committee. I believe we had the workshop meeting since.
We did.
The last council meeting. The actual last fire committee meeting, Mr. Hauser was unable to be there. So that kind of, I guess, derailed the informational part of that meeting.
Okay. Finance.
Okay. And finance committee on October 24th, Mr. Jim Ziegler was at the meeting and currently what we found out is the Rotary Club has been paying $50 a week for the use of the community center. So I know in our cost and fee schedule, we're asking $1.25. So what I'm asking council is based on the Rotary are using the facility on a weekly basis that I was to give them a better price on the $1.25 and I'm asking $90 to charge them per week for the use of the facility. What I also found out as well was that the Rotary Club was paying JPs and not us. And for me, that was a little disturbing because we as the burrow should be billing the Rotary Club to pay us direct and we. For me, that was a little disturbing, because we as the borough should be billing the Rotary Club to pay us direct, and we have no enforcing trail, we have nothing. So, and we're also having paid up the day from JPs for the use of the facility as well. So moving forward, if the Rotary Club does accept the $90 per week, the borough will invoice them direct and make sure that we're replenished for the use of the facility. Is that your motion? Yeah, I'll second that.
Did we have an agreement with the Rotary Club in writing?
No.
On this? Yeah, there. I see.
So that's the question.
Were the boroughs signing? Right, but we didn't, we didn't tell them they could pay $50. Yeah, that's what I was talking about.
No, I was just letting you know that it wasn't who was the Rotary, it was JP Edwards, not the amount I was talking about.
So the Rotary doesn't even actually do the community center, it's JP's?
It was JP Edwards who signed the agreement. Remember, we had talked about who signed the actual agreement.
Did that sign the agreement that is for the rental?
For the rental, yes. And that was John Panese, that was John Panese whenever he had owned it.
Yeah, did that agreement...
Carryover.
Carryover? No. So what do we do about the rarities on this?
Well, she's trying to get the money.
Yeah, I already sent them a letter, and then they didn't respond in October, and I sent them another certified letter. And I actually talked to Jim Zuber today also on it. He is, he talked to Aaron then, too, about the back amount owed. And he said that he would send us a small portion of the check, and then Rotary's going to deserve it and take it out of them paying them, and they're going to pay it directly to us, the back pay.
Oh, really? So they're going to withhold to get it caught up?
Yes.
Is that how you... Well, that's crazy.
He got much of second on the table, so...
Okay, all those in favor say aye. I forgot what the motion was, didn't you, Frank?
Yeah.
Okay. We have first and second.
Yeah, I need that for... I need to abstain, I'm a member of the club.
Oh, okay. All those in favor said aye. Frank's abstaining. Any opposed?
Okay, second. Ben brought to our attention when we purchased the mill owner, and then last month we approved the snowplow. But what we found out, what he found out was that it requires a hydraulic quick disconnect, which we put on there, and it's being purchased by Groff. We gave him a price not to exceed $6,500. The only other option is, if you want to go a little bit cheaper, was to go with the snow pusher, which is probably $4,000. But it's, we're better off going with quick disconnect because of the tilt, and you'd be able, it's more functional than just to go with the snow pusher, because all you're doing is doing a straight line.
It's more functional than a hackle plow.
Yeah, so I'm asking council's approval to purchase the hydraulic quick disconnect, not to exceed $6,500 for the mill owner.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
The other one is, Dawn, I need approval to purchase a basket strainer from the wastewater. The amount is $20,599. Is that Voight?
Yes.
Abernathy? Sales company. I recommend it to take that out of the capital town to buy. I mean, he gave us a picture of it, it's a rust bucket, it needs to be, needs to be done. So I'm asking council's approval to allow him to purchase that for $20,599.
Second.
Oh, any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I need council approval to renew the Vision Plan with Vision Benefits of America. There is no rate increase, it's staying the same price as is.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I saw you need approval to renew the dental plan, a dental, and never an increase, staying the same.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Mark. Public comments?
One thing, you talked about signage, and that triggered something I thought about. As you go into Rec Park, and I talked to Dave Campbell about this one day. I said, "Why am I going to take my dog, I'm going to take my dog down where you're not allowed." He said, "Well, you are allowed, there's still a sign going into Rec Park."
You're not allowed.
Aren't you?
Nope.
Didn't you say you weren't allowed?
For a short free period of time, you were able to?
Okay.
And then, no. You can't take your dog to Victory Park.
Let me try to characterize. Certain takes.
Maybe we can work over at Park. But there is signs that say...
I did notice the sign when I found out. I didn't have any questions, so if you're done, I'll wait.
Are we done? I'm sorry, go ahead.
My name is Clint Arndt, I'm here with the Mifflin County Eco Day Committee. I think you guys approved Rec Park for us last year. We put it in the application last week, it didn't quite make it here on time. I don't even know if you can take action on this tonight. But the one thing that I ask, I'm going to have to get the insurance information from the school district, which is a little bit of some work. So I was hoping I could get conditional approval for Eco Day this year at Rec Park. Our dates are May 21st, and we have a rating date of May 26th. If you can't take action on it, it's fine, we can take it up next month. But I was hoping to be able to get conditional approval before I could go through all the work for, like I said, the insurance information.
We approved it for last year, I believe.
You did, yeah, and we very much enjoy using Rec Park. It's very convenient for our students at Lewistown Elementary to just walk down there.
Right.
High school kids are involved, it's a great event every year, so...
What is the event, actually? What is, what are you guys doing about it?
So what the kids at the high school do, and the high school STEM class, they create learning stations for kids to learn different ecology-related information. I can give you, if you want to have a couple maps here, it has some of the station names. You guys are welcome to... I mean, there's things like monotonic, there's trees away to kids, there's recycling. I did bring enough for everybody. It's very basic stuff, but it's great, it's given on a fifth grader's level. There's not really a political agenda behind it by any means. We just want to use it as part of the park, I take the pavilions, and ask that the rest room will be open, is basically what it is. I have not been involved on a deep level before, so if there's actual questions, I can certainly take them back to the people who have been involved with this a little bit more in the past.
I don't have an issue with it.
Okay, we've seen a motion, or can...
Just conditional, yeah, I'll get you the insurance information, we'll get everything paid for you guys, too.
Well, I don't need to do conditional action.
I'm good if I get...
If you can fill out the stuff, I mean...
Yeah, I got the payment work filled out, I just got to get the insurance.
Get this stuff.
Perfect, thank you, guys.
You're welcome. Okay, any other public comments?
I just have one question before we return.
Sure, well, we don't do any more, we're going to executive session.
What do you do?
Well, I have a question there, Ben, it doesn't matter. But my question is, when I asked you earlier about the GPS, are we using the GPS? Does that mean who's monitoring, if it is?
It was voted upon council, one month ago, as supervision and monitoring.
Are they monitoring it?
Yes.
Yeah? But it's being used?
Correct.
Anyone but... If we're not using that, because he paid the money for it.
Right. Yes, sir.
Just wanted to comment that I was disappointed over the ice block. I was wondering, is it possible to still put that in the borough's name, have community members pay for it?
I wouldn't feel right to have to.
What's your name, sir, so we have your documents for the minutes?
Darvin Donahue.
Thank you, Darvin.
I think I have another question left.
Okay. He says it's not a legal issue. I guess not, Darvin.
Can't do it? Okay.
But thank you for offering, I appreciate that.
You can do your own, though.
Yes, you can. Okay. They would very much appreciate it and need the support. Okay, we're going to go into executive session now.